I got everybody's attention. He heard that Sam will come running now. You'll hear the change in his pocket.
I know it's not.
Eric's in Sam's pocket.
I heard playing up a train track.
Oh, that's true. Sam said it was a train.
I'm listening for him. You can usually hear him coming, the jingling. Does he carry change in his pocket all the time? It's a watch.
He has pocket watches.
He's got something else in there. I mean, I don't understand if they're bullets or something.
They sent them.
You put in an agreement that I spoke to.
Instead of the shirt. I'm on your five.
Sad part is when he's putting that train up and takes an engineer to be in there to help him.
Yeah, there's other things to be said about engineers, but I'm outnumbered right now.
So look out.
Be careful.
I got you. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, let's get the jingling on engineering. We got.
Well, I know.
We didn't frisk him before we came in. We don't know how many.
He would have been here sooner, but he couldn't stop talking about stuff, so.
Y'all was probably arguing whoever got to drive the train. It's my turn.
I'm driving that train, but it's the real one out there in Carter.
That's the one that's going to count.
That's right.
Are we going to have a real train out there for the whatever we call this?
Yeah.
Blame it on Public Works.
Far East.
Blame it on Public Works.
We really meant that.
Okay. We'll call a meeting to order. It is Wednesday, November 27th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. Minutes of reports received and filed. Okay, Commissioner Comitley, liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got Thanksgiving tomorrow. Happy Thanksgiving. A little early, and I think that's about it until next Tuesday.
I have a meeting with Architects Alliance this afternoon, and I'll also be taking, we've got a special guest today. My grandson Daniel Cleaver from O'Fallon is with us today. And he and I will be going to the MU Arkansas game on Saturday. Let's see, Monday I have a safety net meeting. That's my schedule.
Saturday's small business Saturday, so shop your local stores. And then Monday night is the Capital Region Board of Governors Dinner, whatever. And that's all I've got. Presentation from staff consultants invited guests. Do we have MU Extension here?
Yes, Elizabeth is here.
And I read about you in the Unt terrified Democrat. You've already been to Osage County.
Oh, yes. I'm in Osage County. That was where I was originally posted with Extension.
Yeah, you made the Unt terrified Democrat.
I've got another copy too, if you need it. So yeah, I just wanted to come and update you guys. Thank you so much for letting me adjust my schedule. I showed up early this time to make sure. But basically, the packet I gave you is just the most recent impact updates from our faculty and staff that serve Cole County. As I've mentioned before, it's just kind of a little picture of a moment in time of what they're all up to. And so you can see we've got Sean Everly, who is our 4H youth educator, working on quite a lot of things. He's been working with a homeschool group actually in Cole County most recently. And they've been talking about civic engagement and things like that. They even invited Daryl Radel from St. Martin's to come and speak to them because they wanted to try and make a change there about whether they could have certain animals on their property for their 4H projects and things like that. And so they're thinking about being engaged citizens. So I always think that that's very important. We've also got Druba DeKal, our horticulture specialist. He's always busy doing a lot with the master gardeners and with any other folks who are receiving training regarding plants and crops and things like that. And I know that they actually just sent us information that we're sharing on all of our Facebook pages. They're doing master gardener training again early next year. And so they're encouraging folks, if they've ever wanted to do that, to get online and register for that program. Charlie Ellis is our Ag Engineering Specialist. He covers about half the state. And so he's a busy fellow and he's actually getting ready to retire, so that he'll have some big shoes to leave behind. Chrissy Brandl is our livestock specialist. And on her report, there's a little QR code because she is trying to do a livestock needs assessment to make sure that she is providing education that's timely and relevant for the livestock producers in the counties that she serves. Because she's pretty new. She started this year. And so she wants to make sure that she's offering the best possible information. So if you know anybody who would benefit from that, if you wanted to share that, that would be incredible. Rudra is our agronomist. He's also very busy. And we actually have in Cole County coming up on December 16th, in-person private pesticide applicator training. We are trying to get folks in to get their licenses renewed, even if they've renewed it in the past couple of years, because it resets the clock for the next five years. And starting January 1, it's going to cost $75, where previously it was free. And that's due to the EPA and the Department of Ag. And while Extension isn't the one that's doing the charging, we're the one that's providing the education and we're the ones that are going to get help. So we want to get people to get their certification up to date. And then Kathy Deacon is our nutrition and health specialist. And you can see, just because she's had to shrink the font on her report so much, she's got so much going on. She's doing a really great job making a lot of connections with people in the communities and the counties that she serves. So really, everybody serving Cole, I feel like, is firing on all cylinders. We've got a lot of busy folks doing a lot of impactful work. And so I'm really proud to be their coworker. I'm proud to work with them and see all the things that they're doing, so. The other thing that's going on is it'll be elections for Extension Council in January again. And so we're always looking for more folks who are willing to serve a two-year term, at least on the Extension Council. We do a pretty good job of finding folks in the Jeff City District to join. But sometimes our eastern and western districts, it's a little harder to get folks. And we want to make sure that we're serving everybody in the county, that we're not just Jeff City focused. And so I have a couple little quarter sheets to hand out if anybody is interested in these. There's some QR codes on there where folks can find more information and reach out to us if they would be willing to serve. At our next council meeting next Thursday, we'll be voting to approve that ballot so that we can get the legal notice in the paper in time. Do y'all have any questions or feedback for me?
Just for the general elections, we have a meeting once a month.
Yes, first Thursday.
About an hour.
Yep. Try and make it as close to an hour as possible. Yeah, first Thursday of the month at 5:30 over at the Extension Office off Tannahbridge and 179.
And then you can participate as much or as little as you want to. We have the fall festival thing, so we usually work that. But really, there's not a whole lot more to it, but we need people to participate, especially those that are involved or maybe had people that are involved in 4H, FFA, master gardener, stuff like that. So if you're interested, just let us know.
We're going to put you to work for our 250.
Yes.
We're going to do Patriots pots.
Yes.
Patriot pots. So you can have us on that.
Yeah, I actually, I have it on my, I was going to say, I have it on my docket to meet with the 4H Council to get all of the different chapters geared up to participate in their communities around the county.
That's all I had. Thank you, Elizabeth.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Have a hat.
I did. Okay, yes, thank you.
We can put those up on the counter out there. Thank you.
Okay. And a commission comments. Bids and contracts. Approval and signing of Wallace Lubricant's contract for EMS.
This is just a contract with Wallace Lubricant to top off their backup generator at the new EMS building. They would do this quarterly. And then they also agreed to service us in emergency situations as long as they're able and their equipment is up and running. This contract does have a do not exceed amount of $7,500.
What happens if their equipment's not up and running in an emergency?
That's a conversation for the public works. We discussed this.
Me not throw you for a loop.
No, that's fine. We discussed this at the onset. And Director Landwear encouraged us to reach out to Wallace for routine maintenance because it's not something that they, not in the business of delivering fuel on a routine basis. But if there wasn't a disaster situation and they weren't available, obviously, we have the resources.
Gotcha. Okay. Good. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Wallace Lubricant's contract between Wallace Lubricant's and EMS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think. I remember what I just said there about three times. Sorry.
Okay, renewal two of tires and miscellaneous services for Public Works.
This is the second renewal with POMP's Tire Services for Public Works. They've agreed with a no increase this year. They've been pleased with their services and our recommendation is to renew it for another year.
Was that attached to the?
It was. I have a copy if you want to see it.
I was just trying to find in all my bid tabs and stuff I had open, so. Okay, good.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign renewal two of the tires and miscellaneous services for Public Works with POMP's Tire Service.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of uniforms amendment for the Sheriff's Department.
This is an amendment to extend the contract with Leon's Uniform Services for an additional two years for the Sheriff's Department. They do have a 5% increase on here, which Sheriff was okay with. So our recommendation is to extend this for another two years.
Do we do two years at a time? So why would we do renewals then? I thought we did that just one year at a time.
We can. We usually do them one year at a time, but this one, we just decided to do two years with.
It's just one 5% increase, not 5% per year, right?
It's 5% per year.
Per year.
Per year.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Right?
I think. I don't know that.
Well, it would say, right?
It's per year for '25 and '26.
Do they have that caveat in there about the tobacco rings in the back pockets?
I don't know.
We like it.
I know. I'm just curious if they had it. Who's our contract with Public Works Uniforms with?
Aramark.
It's a new name, but it was Aramark.
That's true. That's this or someone's.
This is, that's cleaning for y'all, right?
They clean too.
Yeah, they don't clean ours.
I mean, I thought there was something to do with we can't contract for something for two years because we don't know where the budget's going to be and all that stuff. So that's why we've always done one year at a time. So why is this one different?
Still think there's wording in there in the contract that.
Seventy-two appropriation.
If you want to do one year, I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem.
I'm just asking why they're different.
No, because matters not to me.
Because we haven't done a multi-year thing in a long time, so. I thought we always said that we couldn't do it because we couldn't obligate future commissions to be paying for it or for budgets or several different reasons, so. We don't have to come back and talk about it again. I'm fine with that. So I'm not saying I'm not fine with it. I'm just curious what, we've got a lot of contracts that we come back.
Well, you're setting precedents.
So.
You're setting precedents. Other people will try to do it in two years.
Well, we're not obligating any future commissioners necessarily because you have a term that runs another four beginning soon.
If I change my mind a year now.
Okay, and this gentleman's still got two plus to go, so I'm okay with it in this case.
Yeah, you can do it. Let's go for it then. Harry, do one or?
I'll do it.
I don't want him getting mad at you for not sharing.
We want his grandson to think he's really important.
Well, let Daniel do one. Oh, wait, you can do it. Maybe later.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the uniforms amendment with Leon Uniform Company for supplying the Sheriff's Department with uniforms.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bid award for Glenstone Court Stormwater Improvements Project Number 2024-203-1.
So we opened bids Friday, November 22nd. Sam Gaines Construction read low. Their cost was $41,750. The engineer's estimate was $70,750. There was a total of seven bids, and this project involves removing and replacing the stormwater pipe in the cul-de-sac on Glenstone Court. The Public Works Department recommends awarding the base bid on this project. And it will be with ARPA funds for this one.
It came in at a good price. I like that.
Yep, I'm good. It came in a year or so. Even better.
I'll make a motion to award Glenstone Court Stormwater Improvements Project Number 2024-203-1 and sign the contract with Sam Gaines Construction, Inc.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, bid award for Prior Village Court Stormwater Improvements Project Number 2024-204-1.
So we opened bids on this project Friday, November 22nd, GWH Landscape Contracting, Redlow. Their cost is $85,493.50. Engineer's estimate was $204,250. There were a total of five bids on this project, and it involves removal and replacement of stormwater pipes on Prior Village Court. Public Works recommends awarding the base bid, and this is also an ARPA-funded project.
That came in under two. All I think is you got some towns out there that are pretty questionable. I think Mark, that's Mark's.
Yeah, make sure it gets done right.
I'm not worried about.
It could be like the Tharnrich, you know?
He can be inspector on it and save some money maybe.
The property owner we're directly affecting may be an issue too. Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid award and sign the contract on the Prior Village Court Stormwaters Improvement Project Number 2024-204-1 with GWH Landscape Contracting LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval and signing of SFY-23-24 GMT Cost Report Administration.
Good morning.
Good morning.
These are the reports prepared by our third-party consultant for GMT for the fiscal year 2324. Based on their findings, the net cost of transports due to us is $93,493.16. For that, we will have to pay the non-federal share. If you remember correctly, every year we send them money and they send us a bigger amount of money back. Let me find that number. It's $31,765.08. So we send that and they send us the big check back. And that happens in April-ish of next year. So two pieces to this. One, I just need you to approve and accept the cost report as prepared. And then there's the administration fee agreement, which the Missouri Health Net Division, depending on their operations, has an administration fee that they take out of the funds that are transferred. So two parts. Just ask that you approve those today. Happy to answer any questions. This is about $20,000 more than we got last year. First cost report.
Okay, so two parts. First part I got. You were rather wordy on the second part.
Sure.
So I might sort that up somehow, make sure I get it right. So first off, I'm going to make a motion to approve and accept the cost report as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then may I make a motion to approve paying the administration fee?
It's just the administration fee agreement. We don't know what the.
To approve the administration fee agreement with.
Missouri Health Net.
Missouri Health Net.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You got the tabs on here for it?
I know. So I didn't.
Do I have to?
I haven't unpacked my signature tab yet, so it's the second page and the first half and then the first page.
You only hit two boxes of those each year.
Do I have to initial?
No.
Seriously?
No.
Okay.
And that is due on Friday. Apparently, they don't take extra holiday days. So if I could get a copy of that signature.
It's because our bosses aren't as nice as us.
Yes, exactly. But he would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First reading of budget adjustment number 13.
This is for an even $50,000 for the EMS Enterprise Fund, additional fees they perceive. So there's no action today. We'll bring it back up in 10 minutes.
Just to clarify, that's to combat the increased cost for the roughly 1,300 calls that we did not anticipate that we would end up running this year. So there'll be some additional funds to offset medical supplies and fuel and all that.
Discussion of interim emergency management director. Well, our current emergency management director, Nick Teefsort, is taking a job with University of Missouri. And his last day, I guess, is.
December 2nd, I think he said.
December 2nd. And so, you know, we need an emergency management director. And remembering how good a job Bill Farr did as emergency management director, we asked him if he would step in as an hourly employee until we, you know, do a search or find a replacement. Or, you know, you serve until you are replaced, so we might just keep you.
So hourly and part-time. Yeah, right. So.
But I think you've already been out there working with Nick because, you know, he needs to see what's done, what needs to be done, everything. So we've already got Bill working for us. We just need to kind of make it official. And I think the discussion was $40 an hour, no benefits or anything. And that's what I would like to recommend.
Make a motion unless you got more discussion.
No, that is it. I would make a motion that we appoint Bill Farr, William Farr, as our interim emergency management director at a salary of $40 an hour.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Bill, thank you very much for stepping up.
Yep.
You're welcome again.
No, we really appreciate it.
It takes a little while to fill that position too. We don't want to have to have a, I don't know, a bubble in there, so. So unfortunately, the emergencies do not tell us when they're coming.
No. Okay. We have that. Health Department Strategic Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as talked about last week, you know, on our journey to accreditation, we've worked on our community health improvement plan. And that's, you know, how we're going to work in the community. Part of our department's strategic plan is how are we going to improve so we can better serve our community? So on the first page is just a new mission, vision, and value statement. Made it a little bit more concise. And then the three priorities that we selected as a health department, the first one is public awareness. We want to increase our marketing to build trust and raise awareness of the services that we have in the community. And there's some, you know, objectives and strategies there. I won't read them to you. And then number, our second priority is community engagement. Going out, doing more community events, providing services at businesses like we've done with other businesses with biometrics and flu shots and CPR classes, the baby shower, just those community events. And then the third one is our staff development to strengthen our workforce by increasing training and opportunities to grow their public health knowledge. So I just wanted to bring that to you. If you want to review it, if you have any input, you want to send it to me later. But part of the process is to get our governing bodies' input and review of our three major priorities. Jeff and I talked about it the other day.
Yeah, I stopped in and visited with Chrissy to kind of see what she had in mind here. I guess one of my questions was what do we need to do to improve the services to the community? Really, looking back, I don't know if a lot of people are aware of what all we have out there. Kind of like the cocaine extension, you don't realize what all they have out there. So I think you've got a Facebook page, and if people see a post, share it, comment on it. Just get more information out there.
We're sharing like the new services. We're sharing with those businesses that we've been to do flu shots. We're sending them the flyers of the increased services, like lab draws and the nurse practitioner. I was invited to go on the radio the other day. Maybe we can go back into Colcata Communities. It's been a while since we did a presentation there. I think it was maybe COVID. So just getting the, you know, I think that's a good way to start, is working with those businesses that we already have a relationship with and then getting into those community groups. It's been a while since we've been to Rotary Alliance Club. Actually, I did Cosmopolitan Club just maybe a month or two ago. So just getting into those community groups. I think that we fared better than some public health organizations during COVID. A lot of them lost a lot of trust in their community. I think we fared better than some. So I'm not sure we have a lot of rebuilding to do with the trust, but it's more just awareness of the services that we have to offer.
And then the city administrator saw him this morning too, and he thanked us for having our nurse practitioner out there. He said he's not sure how much they use it yet. And that may be something too, is educating them on that service out there.
Yeah, we offered to do a lunch and learn, and Sheila said she was going to set that up, but I don't think it's been set up yet. So it's something we probably need to do.
I mean, even with our employees, I luckily haven't had to use it, but.
You could certainly come and do some lunch and learns at staff meetings. And then we'll probably bring you a report in January, February, so you can see the usage and who's using it, those services.
It's our employees and their families.
And families.
Yeah, we're starting to get some flus and things like that going around, so.
Right.
It's going to be a lot quicker and a lot less expensive just to come out to the health department, see our nurse practitioner.
So you're still doing a lot of stuff with information from the COVID. And we do get money reimbursed from the state if we get our application filled out correctly. And so if we want to get this stuff, then it's your thing is we're going to have to get with our state legislatures. And we just saw the governor this morning and tell them that they need to get their crap straight out there. And we just saw the governor this morning and tell them that they need to get their crap straight out there, too, because we're submitting the applications, then they're telling us, well, that's not right. Here's how you need to do it. Then you redo it, you resubmit it. They say, okay, it's fine. They sleep on it. Well, we changed our mind. It, it's a big pain in the butt and we're to the point that we're like, look, if you want us to help participate, you quit making it harder on us.
I'm still waiting for them to pay our, I'm still waiting for them to pay our June, August, and September invoice for that contract. And I told them that they needed to. I resubmitted all the information as requested and I did say that our fiscal year was coming to an end, so they needed to get that processed.
Well, it's very frustrating. It's not the first time you resubmitted it.
It is very frustrating.
So when you say resubmitted, you should say you re, 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 resubmitted it.
Resubmitted it, correct.
And so, I don't know, if we need to talk to somebody or we send it back to them and say, if y'all are wanting this done, do it your damn self. Because we're, it's not worth it. You're spending so much time on this and on the phone and, I don't know. Sorry, I said I'd get that off my-
Yeah.
Representative Grady, he's been doing a- He's, he's been doing a lot of good, too.
So they haven't helped us with this?
He, he's-
Have we got it approved? Have we got a check? No.
No, they don't have a check yet, no.
So I'm not hearing anything being done by anybody. So that's why I'm bringing it up. Somebody, they either get something done, get off their duffs, or we just send it back to them. We're gonna quit doing this program. So, we're not required to do it. It's, we get reimbursed for doing it. Alrighty, I didn't mean to run the party.
That's okay. That's been my party for about three months. I've been a Debbie Downer. I'll just let you have that one, Michelle.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
I'm gonna put enough stress on our public health director. You've got plenty of other stuff to do, so. It's very frustrating and I just hear part of it, so.
Okay.
Let me know if you have any comments, questions, what?
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of supplemental agreement for engineering services with Barr Engineering.
Ah, I've been used up some steam.
Hopefully, you're a little cooled down.
Man, y'all tied that just right.
This should be a simple one. So, um, we've been working on the, the ARPA stormwater runoff control projects and we've run into snags, it seems like everywhere we turn with US Army Corps of Engineers. I say snags, it's part of the process. It just takes a lot longer now, it seems like. That's been a lot more laborious, I guess, trying to get through those processes. So, uh, with the, the contract we have with Barr Engineering, we are working on actually three separate projects. One actually bid a couple of weeks ago out in Apache Flats, addressing some of the, um, silt and sediment, you know, and, you know, infiltration into the creek there. So that'll alleviate issues there. Two other projects, we're working on an area around not just Trace subdivision. Actually, the improvement will be on Bender Park property. And then we were working on a project at Woodward Lake and that turned out to be probably not feasible at this time to keep pursuing. So we changed gears to an alternate location at Pioneer Trail School area and constructing a detention basin. And this basin would kind of split between Pioneer Trail School property below the school. We're working with the school district on that. And then county-owned property, which is part of the old lagoon for the Grace Creek Sewer District. There's actually still a lagoon on that property. So in, in doing the project there, we'll be able to take that lagoon out of commission and build a detention basin to help with downstream stormwater runoff. And through the process, there's some additional engineering work to add this other project and then to complete other things related to the project at the Bender Park property for core of engineer-related things. So, um, the net, the net increase, so the, the total cost for, from this point going forward for engineering work is, it's one hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. But we have ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty still left in the contract. So deduct that from the total, the net increase to this contract, part of supplemental agreement number three, would be ninety-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. And again, this is ARPA funding. We'll encumber those funds and then have to spend those within, is it two years? Is that correct?
End of twenty-six.
End of twenty-six. So recommend approval of this supplemental agreement number three with Barr Engineering for ninety-two thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Eric, you mentioned, you mentioned that a lagoon is still there. It's, it's not an operating lagoon, is it?
No, I think it's just a depression that was where the old lagoon was and it started to fill back up with water. It's been there for thirty, forty years or so.
It's now a, a wet pond area.
It's technically kind of a wetland, so.
I wasn't gonna use that word. I thought that was a bad word to bring up.
Flood. We can't use flood in ARPA.
It's a water of the US now, isn't it?
Well, it's not on a stream, so it's not technically, but we have to go through a process with that. But we'll take care of all that. I know a property that currently we, it's ours, we kind of maintain it. It's kind of out of sight, out of mind, but we do have to mow it occasionally, turn that into a stormwater basin. And then some property below the school district, and they've been easy to work with on that and they're willing to cooperate with us. So it'll be a combined, some of their property ours to build this basin.
This project, along with that sediment removal thing we did a week or so ago, is gonna help alleviate the downstream issues, right?
Yes.
And Debbie, we've, you've run this through the ARPA machine and it works that way, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I'm good with it.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental agreement for engineering services with Barr Engineering in the amount of ninety-two thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public hearing for Rainbow Drive sidewalk improvements.
So, uh, we have Brian Williams with Engineering Surveys and Services. He's welcome to come up and participate in this. Matt, you can explain what we're talking today.
So, we are going to open a public hearing for the Rainbow Drive sidewalk improvements. This is to help satisfy the social economic impact requirement of the request for environmental review or the RER for MoDOT. Uh, this project is being partially funded with the TAP grant that we received about a year ago. I do have preliminary plans for that project with us, and so I'd like to open it up for any public comment or questions on that.
I've got a quick, quick question.
All right, sorry. Uh, this is on the northern side of Rainbow Drive?
It's actually on both. Well, yeah, we're actually on the northern side from Terabella to Henwick. And then we're gonna bring it to the south side to tie in from Henwick down to Hunter's Run.
Which takes care of Pioneer Elementary? Does that tie in there?
So in twenty fifteen or sixteen, uh, we did, we got a Safe Routes to Schools grant, which, what, part of that money was called that back then. And that built sidewalk around Pioneer Trail School up from Business Fifty and then up to Rainbow and then down to Hunter's Run and then terminated Hunter's Run. This project will just carry it on.
Got it.
Tie it into Terabella or Charleston Place subdivision, which has sidewalks, so it'll connect that whole route.
Does this tie in a little bit with that city project? Uh, is that, is that right next door?
There's a proposed development.
Right.
Yeah, it's inside the city limits, but it abuts this right of way where the sidewalk can go, so.
So the children from that, uh, from up there now and that new development could actually walk safely to elementary school?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing for the Rainbow Drive sidewalk improvements.
Where'd you get so much power?
Thank you.
Close the public hearing?
That takes a motion?
I think so.
All right. Uh, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, took your power away now. Just like that, it's gone.
Okay, public hearing for Tanner Bridge Road Bridge Replacement.
So, again, this is a public hearing for the Tanner Bridge Road Bridge Replacement Project. This also will help satisfy the socioeconomic impact requirement of the RER for MoDOT for the BRO funding that we have on this project. So I do have preliminary plans for this. Um, and at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment or questions.
I will make one comment from somebody else that had sent it on to me about when we put that in there, making it to where water will still be able to pass through there and it doesn't bottleneck it up and affect stuff down below. I said I'm assuming that they would take care of it. And I think I've already passed that information to you, so.
No, he's already talked to me about it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was noted.
We-
Because if it, if something happens later on and we had an opportunity here to address it, it's not gonna be pretty.
So with, with the concern that you brought, um, they, they feel that the Tanner Bridge project is going to be a bottleneck on the river in case things happen, flood. Realistically, with the, the engineer has, or the consultant has ran the numbers and everything, we are actually creating a larger hydraulic opening. So the, the new bridge will actually be a little bit taller and a little bit longer. So that will allow the floodwaters to pass better in, in essence. We have, they have ran the no-rise certification, in which case this should not impact any floodwaters backing up or, um, from what the current situation is.
I figured that y'all probably were, but I just wanted to pass it on.
Yep.
And why we're having this conversation is because the low area of Tanner Bridge to the south of the bridge is kind of the overflow for windwater. And, uh-
Right.
When water flows over that, it leaves an island kind of in the middle. The people of the Terra Road subdivision people are kind of, kind of thinking it out. And so that was one concern that we were addressing with this, to raise that road up, but as you brought the-
So the overflow area where it usually goes over the road and under the bridge, that's gonna be taken care of. But their concern is, if you're doing that, what kind of problems does that cause when you fix other things?
Yeah, and it's, it's a requirement of FEMA that we submit and get approved, the no-rise certificate. So yeah, it's, it's definitely being taken care of.
Yep. I, he had contacted me and I just wanted to make sure we kept that in the back of our minds, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd like to ask that the public hearing for Tanner Bridge Road Bridge Replacement be closed.
I'll make a motion that we close the Tanner Bridge Road Bridge Replacement hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, public hearing for Stirbridge Road Bridge Improvements.
So this public hearing is for the Stirbridge Road Bridge Improvements Project. Again, this will satisfy the socioeconomic requirement for the RER from MoDOT for the BRO funding that we have on this project. Again, I will open it up. I do have preliminary plans on this project, so I'd like to open it up for any public comment or questions on it.
Want to have anything?
Seeing none, I ask that the public hearing for Stirbridge Road Bridge Improvements Project be closed.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the Stirbridge Road Bridge Improvement.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, summary of surplus equipment auction for Public Works.
So our central maintenance department handles the disposition of all surplus equipment that we don't need anymore. It can be a little, um, time-consuming project to do. We have to estimate what this is gonna be the year before because we put it in our budget as a revenue item or line item in our budget. Tyler leads that effort with, uh, his crew out there. It's a matter of figuring out what we have to surplus, getting it all ready. Purple Wave is who we go through. It's a mostly equipment online auction. And, uh, this year is probably the biggest list we've ever had. It's, like I said, it's a pretty lengthy process and it's not only getting with Purple Wave and getting it out there for bid, but it's also dealing with the people when they come to pay and pick up. It's, it's a pretty, uh, would you say, um, it, it, it takes a lot of time. Tyler does a fantastic job and I just wanted to bring this to your attention. We budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand and, um, and this is twenty-seven items that we sold through this and we netted one fifty-nine, eight sixty, so almost forty thousand more than what was estimated. And if you look at some of the items that were sold, you know, some of them are pickup, you know, truck bed that we had taken off and put a flat down. And, you know, little things like that. There's toolboxes. But then there's the big things like the Bobcat, a twenty thirteen Bobcat mini excavator. We bought a new one, um, earlier this year. Do you remember what that cost was on the, in the seventies, right, the smaller one?
Seventies, eighties, somewhere around there.
And we sold this one for thirty-six thousand. So, you know, when we sell something, if, if we can, and part of the, the whole process here, if we can life cycle this equipment and, and be pretty specific on the right time to sell it, you know, we can get a lot of money back and that'll go to help pay for new. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it cuts down on our maintenance costs and expenses. So I just want to commend Tyler and his crew for doing what they did. I just wanted to bring that to your all's attention. The process we go through to do this and it does, it is pretty important as we budget it and then we sell, you know, we gotta make sure we're recouping that. And we came out well on the plus side this year, so. Just wanted to bring that to you and answer any questions about the process if you have any.
That, that amount, one fifty-nine, eight sixty, is that net of their, of Purple Wave's?
So the buyer pays the, the commission. So this is whatever the price goes for, we get that, that exact amount.
Do you ever buy off of Purple Wave?
No, we looked at it once, I think. I don't know if the government can really do that easily.
Oh, it's because of the bid issue and so on.
Yeah, it might get a little complex. I'm sure if we had to, we could work something out, um, I think. And, you know, I think we've, we've kind of determined, you know, it's probably in our best interest to just buy new. You know, unless there was a, a piece of equipment, we looked at buying that broom that was used, but it was through Caterpillar or one of the many, or one of-
It was a rental.
Like, like a Fabrik or something, something like that. We could, we could buy used through that, but I think at the end of the day, we're-
We did do it on a loader. We rented it for so long and then they said, well, we'll take that money off the top of the loader. So they went ahead and finished purchasing that.
That was seven, eight years ago when we got that. So there's, there's ways to buy used, but generally, it works best just to buy new for us.
And I guess when you sell on Purple Wave, you sell as-is?
Yep. Yes. You know, there's a, the two thousand and eight International cabin chassis sold for ten thousand, five hundred. The frame was cracked. But the motor on those things is so valuable that people will buy that just for the motor. The, the older equipment, it doesn't have as much of the emissions this one did here, but, you know, people will go after these things, not just for the truck itself, but maybe the motor or the parts on it. So there is value to that even as, as it's used.
Yeah.
Good. That's great.
Yep.
Thank you, Tyler.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, discussion on gate improvements and security at Public Works.
So, um, this came to, to our attention just within the past week or so. Uh, we're in the process right now of replacing some pavement in our parking lot inside the gate. It's concrete pavement. We have a contract with Riddle Brothers through the Concrete Repair Services. And there came out last week to, to saw, saw it, get it ready to, to remove. And at that time, we knew that we would have to address the loop detector for the gate as you're pulling out. It automatically opens for you. And with that, we said this might be the right time to upgrade that. The gate itself is fine.
Yes.
But just the access to it. And so it's, it's a number punch. And the number's been the same since we got it. And that's going on six or seven years. That presents a security issue for us. I know the sheriff and EMS director can attest to that. If somebody leaves the county or whatever, the number gets out, for example, we sometimes give the number to companies hauling in salt so they can open it after hours. Items like that, uh, you know, as time goes on, a lot of people are gonna know that number. It, it kind of creates some security issues. So we'd like to go to a key card type system similar to what's in the buildings. The same, same, it can be done. The gate company's coming out next week to talk to us about some upgrades. Also, where you punch in the number, it's really low, so we're gonna put two. We'll put a tall one for the taller trucks and ambulances and then a lower one for cars and pickups. With that, as we're doing that, we also want to look at getting key cards for our, um, our building. And for after hours, we've talked to EMS and sheriff about having their employees get access to the, to the building after hours to use the restroom or just take a break, especially when it's cold. It's, it's good to be able to do that inside our facility, inside the locked gate, rather than being out somewhere, especially with, uh, with the sheriff deputies being in. rather than being out somewhere, especially with, with the sheriff deputies being out and about. So just wanted to bring that to you all and see if you had any questions, concerns. We'll, we'll proceed with getting.
Numbers together.
Numbers with the, you know, the gate company to see what that takes. And then hopefully, we can work with Brian and your all's company on the key cards and that, that side of it. Ideally, it'd be the same company to manage all that. But we got to see through the gate people, you know, what they'd recommend go from there, so.
Yeah, that does need to be changed. Good thing News Tribune won't put that in the paper. But yes, that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
Have you thought about it much, Brian?
Yeah.
Very simple. I mean, who would the gatekeeper be? Because I think now, does Sheila handle those, turning the cards on and off? Or is that to Marshall?
Well, if it's Corps of Employees, they.
So we have two gatekeepers, basically, again. So then would that be us or them?
We don't have access to all of them.
So how we kind of, so we have administrative access to all that. And then what we do is we designate a, a person onsite. So like, for instance, at EMS.
Somebody that.
Yeah. And then we provide a backup to them. So like, we do all the configuration and, and all the setup and stuff like that. And then we teach them how to, you know, do that. Now, if you guys want to print your own cards, you know, we can, we can talk about that, too. But no, it's, it's, it's way doable. So we, how much technical stuff do you want to know? Yes, it work, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a question. Thanks, Brian.
It does need to be.
Engineers do that, too.
Yeah, right.
He's one of us. Give you more information. So it sounds like everybody's on board. We'll go, we'll start the process and see, see where we end up. Something else. Oh, as far as the parking lot itself, the contractor's going to be there next week. I think I sent an email out to department heads and elected officials. And if you could pass that word on to anybody that uses it. Eric, I think you said you got keys to the, to the side gate or the other gate. We'll use that as we need to have the other one closed. So it'll be a couple of weeks. Ideally, if everything goes good, the contractor would pour concrete Thursday next week and wait, and, you know, early next week, we'll be able to open it back up. But nothing ever goes perfect in, in our world. So expect a couple of weeks, maybe three at the most. So that's all I have.
So the pumps will always be available?
Yes.
So the concrete you're taking doesn't have to do with the pumps? Just the entrance and tube?
Yeah, if you can get in.
You'll have to use the gate on the south side of the building.
Yeah, for a couple of.
If you can do it during the day when we're there and all that, it'd be a lot easier. But yeah, just whatever, you'll be able to get access to it. That's all I got.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, before we breeze through that, do we have any unfinished business before we go into closed session? Seeing none, I would entertain.
Pursuant to section six, ten point zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following